I call out of recess, Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petitions number 25P 1639 and 25P 1640. Mound Hill Road North Solar LLC and Mound Hill Road South Solar LLC's request for special use permits to construct and operate a commercial solar energy system in the county. If you are able to hear me but are struggling with Zoom, the meeting ID is 915-3923-9154, and the password is, as always, 209840. If you want to just watch us and listen on YouTube, on your computer or cell phone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County IL for Illinois Zoning Board of Appeals, and don't be worried about upper or lowercase. Find the session date you want, which is presumably this evening, April 14th. Click on it, and you should be seeing, should be able to see and hear us. I note the presence this evening of the Chair of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Forster, its Vice Chair, Mr. Burrow, members Luke Phelan and Tim Crawford, the presence of our fine zoning officer, Alice Hinkle. Assistant State Attorney Stephanie Sasser joins us here in the, in the hearing room. Petitioners attorney Nick Standford is present, along with, I think, three, three of his clients' representatives and a witness. Lee County IT expert Jonathan is here, along with our very capable court reporter, Kelly. And I note one, two, three other necess, other interested parties in the, in the hearing room. And I think that takes care of that. When we left off, I think, I remember, Mr. Standford, you were indicating you wanted to present at least one more witness, and you may proceed. Tell me swear affirm the testimony about to give me the truth, all truth and nothing but truth. Have a seat. You may inquire counsel.
Thank you. Mr. Marus, please state and spell your name for the record. Mr. Marus, do you work?
Yes. Which is a full-service real estate appraisal and consulting firm located in Park Ridge, Illinois.
How long has that been active?
Over 40 years.
State briefly your educational background and experience leading up Marus and, and company.
Sure. I attended and graduated in the School of Finance with a specialization in urban land economics from University of Illinois-Champaign. I immediately was hired by a real estate appraisal consulting firm in Chicago, for which I worked for about five years during that time. I worked and achieved the society or the SRA designation, which was the residential specialty. I also was able to achieve the Illinois real estate broker's license. And then, in 1980, I was awarded the MAI designation, which is the top appraisal designation. And then, in 1999, I was awarded, invited to membership with the counselors of real estate.
What do you do at Marus and Company?
I am the president, but essentially work on all facets of the operation, oversee five other professionals, and do my own work and provide significant consulting services, primarily in the state of Illinois with a strong emphasis in the Midwest. And we generally specialize in complex market studies and valuations.
Could we go off the record for just a second?
Sure.
Judge Slavin, do you recall what exhibit number we're on?
Yes, you would be on 10.
Okay, thank you. So let the record reflect, I'm handing a copy of what's been previously marked. Pet 10, Pet 10.
I have one. Thank you. I just write on it.
We're back on the record. Are you familiar with this document I've handed to you?
Yes, I prepared it.
What is it?
It is basically a summary of what I did for this particular project that I reviewed. Oh, the engineering, the studies that were done for it, and then I did research on the market, market sales, market transactions, demographics, trends of development, sales, inspected the subject proposed development, the subject area, and numerous improved sales in the market. And this summarizes what I've done, and I have prepared over 200 market impact studies in my career for many proposed developments, including industrial facilities, shopping centers, waste transfer facilities, gravel pits, and church expansions, church developments, senior developments, mixed-use developments, and probably over 100 renewable energy projects involving primarily solar, wind, and natural gas to electric.
So then, if you flip to the third page of this document, what does this page tell us?
This is basically a quick summary of some of the wind and solar, or solar and wind projects that I have worked on and many I have testified on in hearings such as this or before courts. And, you know, the first is 20 solar farms in Illinois, 20 wind farms in Illinois, and then goes through with, again, the emphasis on the Midwest. And most of these are generally in rural-type settings.
Okay, and then flipping to the fourth page where it states, market impact analysis conclusions. I, I guess those would be the conclusions that you've drawn from your analysis here?
That's correct.
And can you go over those with us here tonight?
Basically, what we do for any proposed project where it's going to require a variance or a new zoning, we look at the same factors. Look at the proposed project, look at the location, look at the trends of development, and then take into consideration potential negative uses, which can be noise, could be visual stigma such as, you know, 80-foot tower. It can be smell such as a hog containment facility. It can be high-traffic areas with a major shopping center or major industrial use. And then we look at the strain on the community as far as the infrastructure and the public services, and the use upon stabilization. I mean, any project that's going to be constructed during construction, there's going to be some disruption. So that's just a given. But you look at it in the after, and you look at the economic benefits, and you look at the economic negatives. As an example, a new housing development is generally very good for a community, but it requires significant infrastructure with public safety, police, fire, road maintenance, garbage, and then the highest cost is schools, which most areas, the school cost is anywhere from 55% to 70% of the total tax bill. So in this situation, we looked at the proposed project, which you've heard about, and it, and I've looked, you know, and seen as proposed, but I've looked on existing projects, both community solar, such as this one, many of those, and I've looked at projects that were as big as 900 megawatts on 4,500 acres, and looking at the proximity issues, but then looking at the trends of development and looking at values. Mine is not a taste test, it's a value test to see if there's a change in the before and the after. And what I do is every state that I do these studies in, I contact the assessors that have solar in their county to see, number one, have there been professional tax appeals done, or any type of tax appeals alleging there's been a diminution in value? And number two, to see if the assessor in their studies and their sales transactions, because not in all states do they get the information, but in Illinois they do, to see if property values have been impacted. And, you know, the key question, and I think I've interviewed over 120 assessors in counties throughout the Midwest, and not one has there been a professional tax appeal where there's been relief granted, where they found that there's been a negative impact. They've had people complain about them, people don't like change, people don't like the looks, you know, people don't like the looks of a two-story house, a grain elevator, a grain mill, an old barn. And this is, and obviously, the proximity of a containment facility, but there's no data showing negative impact. The next is to find out, have there been transactions that show there's been any impact between a similar property in the same township generally, same school area, same conditions, similar age, similar size, similar lot size, similar outbuildings? Has there been a difference? And the answer is, a lot of them, before they got solar, they thought there would be a negative influence, they didn't find it. They found that the market wants paved roads, wants good education, wants services, and they want modern houses. They want the kitchens and the bathrooms upgraded, they want it to be functional. That's what's driving the market. And yes, if, if there's a, 10 people look at a property and there's solar nearby, there's some that are not going to like it. But in any situation, in my career appraising over 12,000 properties, not every person likes every house. A market is too, and there's been no indication that there's a negative impact. The next is, as I've been doing work through the Midwest, we talk to brokers. And I don't talk to brokers where there's an active project, because if I cite their name, there's people out there that are adverse to the project, that through social media or other avenues can tarnish the reputation. It's just, so that's something I don't do on purpose, because I don't want to injure somebody's career. But in talking after the fact, after solar's been in there, people are selling these houses, no, there's, there are people who live with it, it becomes the new normal. There's no traffic, there's no noise, they're relatively low-flying as far as height visually, and they've been a positive. So on that end, that's another test. Then we do what's called a match pair, and we go to the market, and we look at, again, an existing area, not one where there's proposed, but to look where you have sales transactions of these similar properties, similar to what the assessor does, to similar sales, let's say a mile away, to see if there's any indication. And in my reports, and I don't, because this is a summary, I probably have found over 100 matched pairs, and some actually have solar on three sides, which to me is a concern. I mean, my concern is proximity, 150 feet, preferably over 200 feet from the tip of an array to a house, and the situation far exceeds that. And also looking at visual barriers, barriers such as landscaping, but the match pairs do not show that there's been any negative indication of value. The next is, there's been several peer-reviewed articles on this topic. There's a lot of blogs, but the peer review is basically where it's a professionally published article that's reviewed by generally specialists in that field. And there's one called the Texas, University of Texas study, and that was very interesting because they found that they interviewed participants and knowledgeable brokers and assessors throughout the U.S. And they found the ones that didn't have solar were negative, and thought there'd be a negative impact on value. Then the ones that actually had the experience in transactions found that there was no negative impact on value. They had concern that more suburban locations might be more impacted, but clearly found no indication with rural locations similar to the subject. The next is the Rhode Island study, and that showed in areas by major waterfront, which Rhode Island has, Rhode Island, Connecticut, that had properties generally in excess of $400,000 to $500,000 in proximate solar, that there was potential for negative impact. But they went on to find that in areas where the population density was over 850 or under 850 people per square mile, there was no negative impact at all. And this project, I believe, the population density is probably under 150, maybe under 100, except for the subdivision to the west. So it follows that. The next is the LBNL, which is out in the West Coast, that did a study that was done by a grad student on an appraiser, and there was inconsistencies in that study. They were using data, they were using condominiums, they were using garage condominiums, and the, the study was tainted for a variety of reasons, but they had concern that there could be a 1% to 1.5% negative impact. I interviewed the main lead of it, Ben Hohn, who was the professor that oversaw it, and realized that, number one, they didn't adjust for location, they didn't adjust for condition, they didn't adjust for school districts, and that the study wasn't done by an appraiser, it was by a data, a grad student that basically did a big data dump. So that one is under further review. The last one is Loyola, University of Chicago, did a study of solar farms and basically found values had gone up because of the positive impact, economic impact. That being said, to me, a community solar is not to the same scale as a utility scale, where you might have increased revenues of a half a million to a million dollars a year. So it's a different kind of economic driver with that. But again, the increase in taxes over the existing tax bill and the fact that it's a relatively inactive use would have a minor positive impact to the area. So that being said, and through what's provided in my document, I strongly conclude that, in my opinion, my professional opinion, and it's not only doing work for energy companies, I have over 50 public body clients in the state of Illinois, and mine is to call it as I see it, and there's no negative value impact, in my opinion, based on the subject, because the issues and, you know, the state statute, which we're all familiar with, says 150-foot setback from houses, the subject far exceeds that, and it meets the other criteria, and in my opinion, it will blend in with the community once it's up and running.
So in this, in your report, there's a recent residential sales map, and then prior to that are some, is a table, and then some, between that are some pictures of houses. Can you go through that and describe kind of what you did here and why?
Sure. And, you know, just to quickly summarize on page six, which is kind of shows the visuals of, as an appraiser, what we look at, you know, appearance, environment, noise and odor, traffic, hazardous materials, impacted public services, infrastructure, schools, public safety. It, you know, for these reasons that we look at for any development, this one really, tough to say if there's any impact. Clearly, there's people that don't like the appearance, I get it. But in, again, mine is not a taste test, it's a value analysis. So on page eight, and then there's a map on page 12, I've just provided six sales in proximity to the subject, and the later sales are in the subdivision to the west of the subject, Northland Hills. So that clearly is indicating higher values than the typical Sterling-Dixon area, and that was a concern, and looking at that. But the setbacks, particularly with the new setback, appears to be somewhere in well in excess of 1,000 feet, which is significant, again, when you look at the state statute, and what I found, 200 feet is kind of the minimum that you want to be. So we show here that you have, I mean, there was a sale of $50,000 for a house that was basically falling down, I didn't feel that was representative. So you've got the chart up, and, you know, you kind of see the properties in Dixon are in the mid-100s to the high 200s. Then we get into Northland Hills, there's one sale at $300,000, one at $450,000. It appears that the top of that market can easily exceed a half a million dollars, there's some attractive homes, but still, what I would call more a rural setting on large lots. And so, and I looked at those in relation to the setback and the character of the area, and found it to be fairly typical.
Would you have concerns if there was a residential subdivision built on the subject property, or a commercial, or office, or even industrial, more intensive use on the, on the subject property, in terms of property values?
Again, you're back to the taste test. So we'll go through each use. A residential use is obviously going to generate a lot more traffic, with people going in and out. Our new FedEx and Amazon drivers seeming to get into every neighborhood every day, the garbage trucks, and people going to and from work, school, et cetera. And then, you know, the obvious stress on public safety, government services, snow plowing, if the streets are public, and then the stress on the schools. It's tough for a residential development to break even from a tax standpoint. The industrial use, I mean, today's modern industrial building for distribution, the interior clear ceiling heights are about 36 feet, the top of the parapet wall can be 44 feet. You know, these houses in the area generally are 12 to 24 feet. So, I mean, these are major structures that have significantly more mass. They have, they provide jobs, they provide taxes, which is a benefit. They're really not stressful on public safety. However, the truck traffic, these, the trucks are large, and they're coming in and out of there all the time. So visually, it's much more visible from all the houses in the area, 40-foot structure as opposed to the solar panels, which are generally, I know they can, they have a max here of 20 feet, but they're generally elevated in 12 to 15 feet. So it's a third of the height of these big industrial buildings. A shopping center provides services, provides sales tax, provides jobs, but, you know, has a stress on shopping, and I'll be honest with you, I don't think the population density would warrant it. So if you put a big box, let's say a Walmart or something there, I think it would fail. I don't think they would build it, and the last thing you want is an empty building. So I don't think there's enough population density to warrant a major retail use. And manufacturing, obviously, you're going to have smoke, you're going to have trucks. And other uses are a higher intensity agricultural use, or you could have, you know, various grain storage operations and other uses, or you could have significant animals that create use and smell and potential ground contamination.
So in the second to last page of your report, it talks about findings of fact for some Wisconsin projects. Can you describe why that's, why you wanted to highlight that?
Yes. Wisconsin is interesting because the central and northern part, the, it's the cheese state and the milk state, and the milk world has diminished, there's too many other options, we just don't drink as much milk. And the farmers, dairy farmers are bringing their cows inside, so they don't need the big grazing area. So they, Wisconsin has a surplus of land, the land quality for general soybean and corn is not as good as Illinois. So there's been a lot of solar development, and I've had to look, and these are all projects over 100 megawatts. So the minimum project here is probably 15 times bigger than the proposed subject, one of them's over 300 megawatts on 4,500 acres. And I was involved in five of them, and they all went before the Public Utilities Commission of Wisconsin, which has an administrative judge, so it's a court hearing, and they put on evidence, and there's cross-examination testimony. And I had to testify, and in every situation, the concurrence, and these were approved, and they were found based on their studies, and they had independent studies, there were objectors that spent money to fund studies, they found there was no indication of diminution of value. So that's kind of consistent through the state, where Illinois, it's done, you know, by county. So every county does things a little differently. Obviously, since May-June of 2023, with the new state laws, maybe it's a little more consistent. But here in Wisconsin, the adjoining state, in communities very similar to the size of the subject, they are found to have no negative impact, and these were all, probably on average, 20 to 25 times larger than the subject.
Okay, thank you. Hold on.
Got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, this witness, Ms. Hinkle?
I have none, thank you.
Okay. How about ZBA members, Mr. Forster?
I have no questions.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes, just one other thing in your, your vast work. We mentioned screening, which has gotten popular. Have you seen any places where anybody has really talked about the effects of having, you know, landscaping, screening versus not with all the people and the things that you've talked about?
So that almost becomes a personal choice. In my opinion, if it was me, I would probably prefer some fencing or arbivide. Some people don't want screening, but what I've noticed in looking at these and wind out in rural areas because of the fields, and today, like today, which is very windy, people generally plant their own trees and sedge and screening to protect themselves from that dirt and dust coming in from the wind. But in my opinion, you know, screening is a positive, but there are certain people, even though they're objecting the project, they don't want screening. But to me, I think it's, it's a benefit.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, that's all.
Mr. Phelan?
I have no questions.
Uh, Mr. Crawford?
I have no questions.
Uh, Ms. Sasser?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, great. Interested parties, if you have a question or questions, want to raise your hand, I'll try and, first of all, let me, anybody on Zoom?
Yes, I have some questions.
Okay. I guess I'll go to you. Okay. Fire away.
Um, how long have you been directly working?
Let's get started, we don't know who you are, so let's get started with your name and where you live.
Uh, I'm Griffin Thewison, I've been here the past, previous sessions, I just couldn't make it today.
Welcome back.
In person. I live at 1724 Broadview Drive.
Go ahead.
Um, how long have you been directly working with the solar company, seeking the special use permit? Um, how long have you been directly working with the solar company seeking the special use permit?
Time gets away from me. I have to admit, I would estimate three, three to five months.
Um, when was the last time that you officially appraised a home?
Sometime in the last year on several occasions, and I've got several numerous that we're doing right now. And when I say we, uh, I'm involved in sign and take responsibility.
Um, when is the last time that you personally did it, appraised a home?
That's the same answer. Every one I do, I personally see. I personally participate. The report's done under my direction and I personally sign.
What, what are major factors that go into appraising a home?
Uh, simply um, getting the initial information such as the plan of survey, uh, reviewing floor plans, building plans, inspect, personally inspecting the property inside and out, understanding any work that has been done, let's say in the last two to 10 years and the cost of it, and then in understanding the uh quality of it. Uh, obviously, understanding the location. Uh, is it a paved street? How big's the lot? Does it have um public sewer, public uh, does it have water as opposed to a well? Um, uh, sanitary issues, stormwater issues, the quality of the community, the economics of the community, and then sales in the community, the quality of the school system. Uh, major factors that may impact the market. Uh, amenities uh of the area, you know, such as again, the schools, parks, uh, possibly golf courses, possibly lakes, possibly mountains. Uh, these are a few of the things and I'm obviously the function of the property, the outside. Uh, you know, the landscaping, the quality, landscaping, the patios, the decks, uh, the garage, the storage area on the interior, uh, the function, quality of the layout. Uh, the function of the uh closets, the kitchen. Um, and the other amenities that the modern world wants are particularly uh, the market that the subjects located in. The uh cost of the taxes uh is another factor. So these are just a few of the things that are considered. Ceiling heights is another quality of the windows. I think I mentioned roof. And I could go on and on decorating. Obviously it shouldn't, but it does impact views, uh, windows.
Um, does pools increase the value of a home very much typically?
Interior pools are generally torn out. Uh, above-ground pools are considered to be chattels and many times are removed by the next buyer because of safety issues and aesthetics. In-ground pools, uh, it goes to the quality of the pool, the condition of the pool, if there's any cracks or detrimental conditions, it's a problem. Um, and certain people like pools, but it creates an insurance hazard. Uh, it's a liability uh for many. So, you know, while it's really kind of an amenity that most people they want to have, and if they spend 25,000 or 150,000, it's something they want. But generally, rarely is it ever that cost ever recaptured in the market. Uh, it may be more so where you get into, when I'm talking in-ground, where you get into houses over a million dollars. Uh, but when you get to a lower, you know, cost below that, uh, it many times will be a negative, even though it's a wonderful outside area. But you know, fortunately we live in the Midwest and um, you know, there's not a significant season to use them.
So there, there are amenities that increase value, but oftentimes amenities never typically recoup their entire value in appraisal?
Depends on the market and depends on the depth of the market and depends on the situation. Um, you know, and there's published studies on this all the time. You know, clearly painting closets, upgrading kitchens and bathrooms provide a return, decks, patios and landscaping uh provide a return. Uh, you know, I've been in houses with indoor bowling alleys. Uh, I've been in houses with indoor movie theaters and in houses with indoor gyms. Um, and you know, the last one, the indoor gym, the next guy, you know, basically used it for a big closet. I mean, in a workout room where he had, you know, full height for basketball shooting. So whenever you get into a specialty that has liability and additional maintenance, it cuts both ways, but pools are expensive, in-ground pools are expensive to build. But if they're not done, they're just a natural liability and a risk.
So you would say that appraisals are very complex and pretty unique to most situations?
I I'm smiling. You can't see it. Where you have the stock market changing hourly, interest rates changing hourly and other issues that all impacts the real estate market. Um, and so the appraiser, besides dealing with the question you asked, and maybe I didn't put in market conditions where 2008, 2010 were in a real estate depression, residential values generally plummeted. Uh, but it is complex and you have to understand the market.
In your packet, I don't, I don't quite know what to to call it. You included five different studies in here from the University of Texas, University of Rhode Island, um, the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory, the La- Loyola University in Chicago, and then your uh, your seven major solar projects that you've done. Those five um literature reviews. What, what, in simple terms, what is your conclusion from the University of Texas, first off, I guess?
Basically, the people didn't have solar, had no experience with it, uh, didn't understand it, thought there'd be a negative impact on value. Uh, those that had experience and had market uh experience with it, found that there was no negative impact. Uh, they had concern that there could be uh in the future, impact from utility scale solar, which generally is over, I would say 70 megawatts, which is 10 times the size of the subject. And most utility scale solar projects that I've been involved with probably average 150 to 200 megawatts.
So would you say that you agree with the findings of the University of Texas or you disagree?
So the study is what the study is, and I think generally it supported no negative impact. And the way it was presented and concluded, I found it to be reasonable.
What about the study with the University of Ro- Rhode Island? Did you agree with the findings of the study or did you disagree?
I agreed with the study because it had concern and showed indication with high-density areas, oh, very high-valued areas uh that because of the value of the land, instead of being developed with, you know, million-dollar-plus houses, they put a solar farm on it, that there could be a negative impact rather than having consistency of the high-value properties where it found in rural areas similar to the subject, there was absolutely no negative impact reflected.
So on your paper, it says that the study does not effectively show the benefits that solar energy provides the properties and municipalities in rural areas and is not relevant to the pro-subjected subject solar farm.
That's correct.
Could you expand upon, yeah, could you, could you expand upon that?
Good. It basically concludes as part of their study, they found no evidence of negative impact for rural solar farm development.
What, did you agree or disagree with the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory study?
I found because it had so many flaws uh in the base data that I did not agree with it. Uh, but it really didn't have significant conclusions.
And then did you agree or disagree with the Loyola University of Chicago? Literature review?
I mean, that basically was indicating that there were positive values and positive economic impacts to the areas that had solar. And that's the same indications that I've uh seen in my review of these completed solar projects when they're operating and paying taxes and having no burden uh on the area. So I agreed with it.
And then I was not able to look up um your seven major um, solar projects, but are those just the same as you, you wrote that the negative impact concerns cannot be substantiated? Could, can you expand on what you mean by that?
Um, I did individual studies on each of these projects where I visited the project, reviewed all the economics, uh, researched data, uh, provided uh match pair analysis, did the assessor's study and found no indication of negative, any negative impact on value. Uh, the wording on this was basically came from the courts where instead of saying it was a positive impact, their line that they had or the check mark that they had to uh satisfy is there was no negative impact. So that's what they did.
So, yeah, you, you said that you agreed with the University of Rhode Island um study. And from what I read in there, um, there's a statement here that says the results suggest that the overall negative effects of the solar arrays on nearby property values are driven by farm and forest sites and non-rural areas.
That's not a question. That's not a question. You're reading them things.
I'm saying a statement so that I can ask him a question about it. Does he read these studies? Right? I can do that.
Sure, just ask him. Did you, did you, just ask him, did you read in that study?
I'm in my car right now because I had to take my wife to the airport and this wasn't a convenient time for me. Is there another time that I could, could do this?
Well, it depends on when you're gonna get, when, when you're gonna get back?
Um, I'm an hour and a half away. I just parked in a Walmart so I could be a part of this conversation.
Okay, well, well, I was gonna suggest pull over. I was hoping you weren't reading while you're driving, driving. Um, if you, if you stop, just ask the question. Did you read in the Rock Island or the Rhode Island study that and?
I just, I just don't have my stuff with me. I'm trying to read off my tiny little phone, so it's difficult.
Try your best.
Okay, that's, I am trying. You kind of, you kind of cut me off. I didn't get to finish. I'm trying to jump back and forth here, so if you could be a little patient, I'd appreciate it. Would you like me to reread that statement or can you remember what I said?
Well, let's start the question with, did you read in the Rhode Island Report and, and go from there?
Did you read in the Rhode Island Report? Which it didn't specify exactly which one it was either, so that becomes a little bit of an issue. So hopefully this is the right one. The results suggest that the overall negative effects of the solar arrays on nearby property values are driven by farm and forest sites and non-rural areas. Non-rural is the most kind to suburban as there are very few solar sites in urban areas.
I read that, yes. And I'm not sure if it was this study. There's other studies out there, but yes, I've read that.
So from, from these studies, I mean, almost on every single one of these pages, you state that to a degree, you disagree with some of this and to a degree. And then you give seven major solar projects that you've worked on. What, what are the facts? Like with, with an appraisal, there are facts with an appraisal that have determined that there is no negative effect on residential housing?
Character of the area, the value of the area, the demographics of the area, what's driving uh the market. Uh, and the strain uh on the local infrastructure, which is basically none, where there is positive input provided. Uh, number two, it is uh to some extent uh preserving the land for future agricultural use as opposed to an industrial uh development or residential development that generally that use is agricultural use has changed forever. Uh, the um match pair analysis that I've done, we discussed the economics already. The assessor's study, which I went into in pretty good detail in my direct testimony, how uh the assessors, where they're dubious, but they've got no appeals and they, they, you know, have thousands of transactions and show no indication of negative impact on value. And these are interviews that I personally did. Um, and then these uh studies that basically are done mainly by universities using uh grad students and using massive amounts of data showing what they found. But it consistently kind of comes back to a well-designed project with sufficient setbacks and necessary screening and well-presented and well-maintained is not a negative, will not have a negative impact on value. In this situation, it's relatively small. Uh, the standards of the county and the state are going to require uh that they take care of all the issues. Uh, I'm not a scientist and on the environmental issues, other people have covered that. Um, but again, if it's properly done, properly cited uh and properly set back, it just becomes another part of the ag and uh community. And I have seen no negative impact on value where I have been involved with projects that in my opinion will have a negative impact on value for a variety of reasons.
So with the, the complex nature of the housing market, the housing market, how does typically increase in value every year, correct?
No, not necessarily. When interest rates uh.
I use the word typically.
Don't, don't interrupt him. You asked him a question. Let him answer the question. And not necessarily. If the economics go down, a major employer is lost, interest rates go up. Uh, and there's an oversupply of housing, uh, values can go down. And we saw that in 2008 to 2010 in this area.
So typically over, let's say a five-year period, do the values of houses increase?
That's a generic question. And again, I could go from 2008 to 2012 and I would tell you, no. I could go from I could go from two thousand uh nineteen to two thousand and twenty-four in generally good quality areas. The answer is yes, but there are parts of the country that have been economically hit where they've actually gone down in value. It happens.
So due to the complexity of the market, it would make it very difficult to tell what factors are affecting the value or appraisal of a house.
I don't understand your question. This is what we do for a living. And we look at the analysis of what's driving the market. And thirty years ago, shag carpeting was hot. Now it's not. Uh, mansard roofs were hot. Now they're not. You know, you look at what the market likes and what they don't, and you interpret it. Yes, it's ever-changing. That's why appraisers stay in business. Just like the value of farmland. You know, what, what's going to be the impact with higher interest rates? With uh possibly uh tariffs and everything else? Nobody knows. We can all speculate. But what I do is look at all the various data points and analysis and based on my experience with over twelve thousand properties for public, for private, for third parties. This is what I found.
So when you're, you're finding the fact that seven major solar, solar um projects, you say on all that the negative impact concerns cannot be substantiated. Could you rephrase that statement?
A, a court wrote that statement, sir. I'm not gonna tell a court what to say. I can tell you my interpretation. I'm answering your question. I'll wait till you finish your question.
I'm finished.
So first of all, a court wrote the statement. So that was their decision. That was their minimum standard. So based on all the analysis, all the facts, they found no evidence that would substantiate a negative impact on value.
You guys were talking earlier about if there was another commercial project placed on this property instead. Um, and from what I gathered, you concluded that there would be no reason for another commercial project to be built on this property. Is that correct?
I'll clarify, as of today, the data value, in my opinion, it wouldn't be economically feasible to build a commercial property on this project. That being said, property rights, people can do what they want to do. And somebody could build, you know, a Bass Pro Shop or they could, you know, build a small grocery store. In my opinion, it wouldn't be the highest and best use of the land, but it could be done, you know, there's industrial uses in the area. There's commu- commercial uses not too far away. Anything is possible. I'm saying, in my opinion, that's not a good uh economic use and it probably uh could change the character of the area more than the solar farm.
So which of these studies would um? I don't have that with me. Never mind, sorry. I don't have any more questions at this time.
Right. Um, any other interested parties? Uh, is that all on Zoom? Okay, in the, in the courtroom, hearing room, any other interested parties, questions, raise your hand. All right, seeing none, you may step down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further evidence, Mr. Caniford. Okay. Sure. I sort of went too quickly. I was thinking I had too fast, sorry.
Mr. Merz, just one question. What is, what would you say is the current uh state of the real estate market in this area?
Stable.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, you can step down. Um, let's uh take a break. When we come back, interested parties can present any evidence they have. Let's take a break till uh twenty, twenty of twenty of seven, that is. No, eight. Okay, folks. Settle down and get back to work. Um, no further evidence from the petitioner. So, uh, interested parties, now it's your opportunity to present any evidence. Um, I always struggle at this point to, to help folks understand what I mean by that. This is not a roundtable discussion, as you've discerned. It's, it's a hearing. That's what the statute says. It's a hearing. You have a hearing, you present evidence, you're under oath, witnesses are under oath. Um, and of course, at the end, everybody's allowed And of course, at the end, everybody's allowed what some call public comments, some people call closing arguments, closing statements. When you're allowed to stand up and tell the zoning board of appeals how you feel, what you think they ought to do, all based on the evidence that's been heard. If you're going to do that, of course, the ZBA welcomes your comments. But there is a difference between standing up, telling them based on the evidence that's been heard in the hearing, what you feel they ought to do and why they ought to do it. And during that public comment or closing statement alleging facts, that's the dangerous part. When you tell them facts, the only fair way to do it, just like the petitioner did, is to present witnesses under oath that are subject to cross-examination. As I said, I always have trouble explaining this. A simplistic approach is if you stand up and say to the zoning board, "I live on Mount, I live at 2,000 Mound Hill Road, and I feel like I shouldn't have to look at this community solar project." All right, let's break that down into two parts. Telling them how you feel and you shouldn't have to look at it, that's perfectly acceptable closing comment. What's not is the fact that you live at 2,000 Mound Hill Road. If you're going to say something like that, then you get on the witness stand now and testify, "My name is Susie Smith, and I live at 2,000 Mound Hill Road, and I'm going to tell the zoning board later how I feel about things because I live there." Now, it's very simplistic, and that's why I said it that way. I doubt anybody's going to not believe somebody that, when they say where they live, but it's possible. So the fact you live there is a fact to testify under oath. How you feel is different than that. That's fair game for public comment. So having said that, are there any interested parties who wish to testify? Indicate by raising your hand if you wish to testify. Again, the public comment thing is coming down the road. I don't see any hands raised here in the courtroom. How about on Zoom? Many hands raised? I can't see you. Okay, all right. No interested parties' evidence then, so we move to closing statements, public comments, closing arguments. Call them what you may. Petitioner has the burden, so they go first. You may, but don't forget to turn the microphone on. Oops. Off the record. Please.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and attention throughout these several hearings. We appreciate it. Over the last several days, you've heard detailed testimony, which shows that the Mound Hill Road North and South solar projects comply with the requirements set forth in the statewide siting act, which is 55 ILCS five backslash five dash 1220 and Lee County Ordinance 2023 dash zero seven dash zero zero eight, which pertains to solar farms. First, you heard testimony from Austin Schwer, the co-CEO of Sundial Energy. Mr. Schwer went through each of the requirements for solar farms in Lee County. He went through all the requirements in the Lee County ordinance, which is right here. And then he also went through the county's special use factors. And he finally finished up by going through the county's performance standards. So tonight, we, under the Lee County ordinance, the applicant must satisfy several special use factors. And as shown through the testimony from the witnesses through these proceedings, it is clear that the applicant has satisfied each of these standards. Regarding whether the projects would endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare, Mr. Schwer described how the projects will help the general comfort and welfare by providing an increase in property taxes due to the higher tax rate of the solar farm. This will benefit all taxing bodies in Lee County, who will be able to use this money to fund their initiatives. Lee County residents can also subscribe to the projects and get a credit on their electricity bills. The site will be planted with pollinators, which will enhance biodiversity in the area and improve drainage. Mr. Schwer described how the project satisfies all setback requirements under the Lee County ordinance. The applicants, after taking into account the feedback from nearby residents at the Palmyra Township meetings, increased the project setbacks. The project, the north project has a residence now located over 874 feet from the northern project boundary on the north site. Remember, the setbacks in Lee County are 150 feet. The south project has an occupied residence owned by the Nick Hermes Trust, which is located approximately 891 feet from the project boundary. The north and south projects are located approximately 460 and 480 feet, respectively, from Mound Hill Road, well outside the required setback. Mr. Schwer testified that the projects will use all new industry-standard equipment that is UL-listed and compliant with all federal and state requirements. Mr. Schwer testified that the project will be fenced. And as you heard in the testimony from Mr. Schwer, we are open to woven wire fencing. I know that looks a little more agricultural and rural. We're happy to accommodate that if the zoning board would like to recommend it. And the fence would have all required safety and emergency contact signage to protect public health and safety. Mr. Schwer testified that noise will remain within state mandated thresholds. Mr. Schwer explained that traffic will be approximately three to six times a year after construction, or as needed, so very little traffic, if any. When asked about whether the uses or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity would be diminished, Mr. Schwer testified that the projects will not create electromagnetic radiation fields or vibrations, odor, or air emissions at project boundaries. He testified that the applicants actually moved the project further away from occupied residence to the south, Mound Hill Road, and the Northland Hills subdivision to the west, which allows for the applicants to utilize the existing topography of the site to further screen these projects from public view. The applicant will also be providing landscaping on the west side of the project to provide further screening from the Northland Hills subdivision and from Mound Hill Road. And the applicant testified that they will continue to engage in negotiations and discussions with the landowners to the north and south of the projects as to whether they prefer landscaping on the one hand or a payment in lieu of landscaping. Mr. Schwer was asked whether the project would impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property. He testified that Lee County Comprehensive Plan envisions these parcels as rural agriculture, not planned office or planned neighborhood development. It was rural agriculture. Ms. Hinkle testified that the state law allows solar farms in land that's zoned agriculture and that this parcel is zoned agriculture, and therefore, it is consistent with Lee County's comprehensive plan. Mr. Schwer testified that after the project's useful life, the sites can be and will be decommissioned as pursuant to the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement with the Department of Agriculture, making way for any possible future development that the market demands. Regarding the use of utilities, Mr. Schwer testified that the projects will make improvements to the electrical infrastructure at the site, thereby enhancing grid reliability and providing additional power to the grid. And in today's day and age, with these data centers and Illinois' well-known and documented demand for energy, this site will help fit that bill. For access, oh, Mr. Schwer testified that no water or sewer is required for the solar farms, which makes them quite unique. For access to the site, Mr. Schwer explained that there will be two access roads built on the site consisting of a geotextile underlayment in Class VI aggregate. Regarding access and ingress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion, which is a standard under the ordinance, Mr. Schwer testified that these projects were specifically designed to accommodate all traffic related to construction by having vehicles parked within the project sites and having a lay-down yard for materials. He also testified that the access roads are sufficient based on the WB50 analysis in the site plan. He testified that the projects will adhere to all Lee County and State of Illinois road use requirements, and the applicant will enter into a road use agreement with Palmyra Township for the use of Mound Hill Road. Mr. Schwer testified that after the construction of the project, site visits, as I said, will be approximately three to six times per year, so almost no traffic whatsoever. So after you heard from Mr. Schwer, you heard from Andy Galone. He testified as to engineering issues, and he's a licensed engineer in Illinois having experience with over 10 other solar projects. He testified that there would not be adverse stormwater impacts and testified that drainage would actually be improved from the current conditions at the site. He testified that the applicant's vegetative management plan calls for pollinator-friendly vegetation with deep roots, which will improve drainage, regenerate the soil, and enhance biodiversity compared to current row crop conditions. Mr. Galone testified that drain tile surveys will be done prior to the issuance of a building permit. And as required by the AMA, the projects will maintain the surrounding area's subsurface drainage and repair any damaged tiles if such damage occurs. Mr. Galone also went over what moving the project meant in terms of the view, based on the natural topography of the site. After Mr. Galone, tonight you heard from Mr. Marousse. Mr. Marousse testified that the market in this area is stable and that the solar farm would not have an adverse impact on property values in the area. He testified that solar farms have become accepted features in rural landscapes and that this low-intensity passive use is arguably preferable to the neighbors than intensive commercial, industrial, or even residential uses. That's because solar farms are not a strain on public resources. It's basically none. And the land use isn't forever, like other permanent structures. It will be decommissioned at the end of its useful life. So we didn't hear any direct testimony from any other experts. We did hear some questions of our applicant and our experts, and those questions were addressed. We heard some concerns about aesthetics, but those aren't a valid concern under the special uses as set forth in the case law on the subject. And the applicant has attempted to move the projects eastward to screen some of the panels from view. And as I said, landscaping will be offered to the north and south neighbors. Property values, Mr. Marousse addressed property values directly, and the interested parties did not provide any evidence to the contrary. Environmental concerns. Solar projects like this are being constructed throughout the state of Illinois with similar equipment. The projects will consist, the posts for the project will consist of racking with hot-dip galvanized steel. This is industry standard, and there's no evidence presented that would create any environmental problems with the site. The equipment installed will be new and comply with all industry standards. In conclusion, for all these reasons, the applicant requests that the proposed solar projects be recommended for approval. We thank you very much for your time and consideration of these solar energy projects.
Thank you, Mr. Stanford. All right, interested parties, time for public comment, closing arguments, however you want to think of it. Let's start, we started on Zoom last time. Let's start in the courtroom. Anybody want to make a public comment? Raise your hand. Yes, sir. Come on up. And please turn on the microphone. And try and speak into it. I, it's a, you're gonna, almost gotta swallow it, but you'll...
Swallow it?
Yeah, almost have to.
Hello? Castine? Okay, can you hear me?
Can, and if you'll start with your name again and...
Nick Hermes.
And you live...
I'm on 1690 Mound Hill.
All right, go ahead.
I'm a little concerned, the hearing's not, we're still, hearing's still going on, and there's the metal, or the petition, the three metal petition signs hearing were taken out at 9:15 this morning. Why is that? They were gone. So how would you know where those are if the signs weren't still there? They were removed. Person came over and removed them. Why was that? That's the least of the concern, though. And I'm going to be speaking for the Class A farmland, if I could. You know, this is some of the highest PI ground we have here in our area, northern Illinois. You know, I'm one of the many homeowners here on Mound Hill Road. I'm going to be speaking for most all homeowners and landowners in our area, not for the inherited landowners, Mark, John, and Anthony Hermes, who all live in Arizona. We have contracts with Sundial. These facilities that are on Class A farmland with high PIs, solar facilities being built should not be put on much lower, they should be put on much lower-grade ground of Class B or C farmland, lower productive indexes. Class A farmland should be, remain preserved for our food production that is needed here in the United States. As a kind of ground, as this kind of ground is the highest-yielding crop production, and it's not available, but mostly here in the Midwest. At the Palmyra Township Planning Committee meeting in March 10, Sundial had not done the LISA report. I have it now, though. For the two parcels being petitioned here tonight, they didn't finally get the LISA reports on March 25. The filing information was taken from these reports. According to the Natural Resource Conservation Service soil survey, about 100% of both parcels are made of prime farmland soils, 100%. These soils include Muscatine Parkway and Otter. In regards to the land evaluation site assessment, the LISA report, the land evaluation score prime soils are rated at, rated between 75 and 100. Both of these parcels have near-perfect land evaluations, with the south parcel having a land evaluation score of 99. The other north parcel has a land evaluation of 97. Now, this is what, they did get their report to me. So I asked for that, but I came in kind of late. These parcels are about the best prime-producing farmland you can find here in Illinois, and they should remain that way. Also, solar facilities are not dropped on top of subdivision historical drive-in theaters. I have also read there is a potential cadium solar cell in the solar panels, which have been known to be very carcinogenic and cancer-causing, which I just got done beating stage four. I currently have otter remission, and I'm getting infusions again. And I have to have my kidney removed in a month. I agree with all Northland Hill residents and other residents and property owners, Palmyra Township Supervisor, the board of which all eight voted us down. The owners of the historical drive-in theater that has turned 75 years old this year, in which a statement was read earlier, my wife read that. The ground they are proposing for the solar is some of the best prime farmland in Lee County and the state of Illinois, but now they want to strip off 10 inches of topsoil and haul in two to six inches of crushed aggregate and bury miles of cable and drive thousands of galvanized steel posts into these ground, into this ground, a potential, potential for the hot-dip galvanized zinc, they're hot-dipped, galvanized zinc, I've done, that applies to these metal posts to come off then leaching into the water tables. Even galvanized posts are subject to corrosion in highly corrosive environments. In a study, in a study here, posts have service life of ranging between 17 and 30 years, which is shorter life of only 17 years being in a highly corrosive environment. Lee County Conservation District shows that there's a 100% high risk of corrosion to steel from the surface at least five feet down in these two parcels. Now, this is Lee County report. With a steel post being driven down eight to 12 feet, there's a very concerning the damage off, damaging of driven posts during installation and can impact protective galvanizing zinc coating along with the corrosive environment. Task for the durability could have been done, but he didn't do it. I believe in a sundial, the Palmyra Township Planning Commission meeting, that the substation was going to be used was the one behind... was going to be used was the one behind, one the hill and Mount, one on Mount Hill Road, being behind the drive-in theater, because Sundial said it sits, sits near the substation. It should be a substation. The one you're using is 3.2 miles away. It's the one that sits behind the farm and fleet up the road, up Mount Hill, on going south, 3.2 miles away. But it's not, it's not, it's not the one there, that substation you're saying you use, it's not the one, you're using the one that's 3.2 miles away. Now, here was your offer, it was 10% savings on your comm ed bill if you subscribe. 10% savings. Okay, that's what you said, okay. The following is some information taken from LaSalle County paper, Star Rock Media from the past Thursday. LaSalle County Board had an official meeting in Ottawa, which is, which is east of LaSalle. The board voted 25 to 5 to approve the resolution to send Springfield for a repeal and replace the House Bill 4112 that they believe had silenced the voice of the discussion of where to put renewable projects. The 4112 bill was signed into law January of '23. It sets a uniform location standards throughout Illinois. Because of the new law, these unhappy townships and counties now have had to change their zoning laws to comply. And if that project isn't presented to the county zoning board and it doesn't fit the 4112 narrative, it must be approved by the county, or they can be sued. You'll regret. The 25 to 30 board members said that they are concerned that they're no longer having a voice on the project that they think could, or that they could impact the homeowners, the businesses, and the general welfare of the consumers. The board says there needs to be a rightful balance among municipalities, counties, and state. They also want to make sure that local tradespeople are hired to do the work, and they are the, they want to, and they want the flexibility with things like where the solar panels are All published. LaSalle County paper. This is a start of trying to get the voices heard, this is a good start, trying to get the voices heard, to get some control back to the local government. For the placement of solar facilities, rather than just, rather than just being a state in the Pritzker's Law, 111021123. These solar facilities could be directed to Class B or C farmland, which is nowhere near the production of Class A farmland. I spoke to the, I spoke to our state's attorney office, Charlie Boonstra, in regards, regards to the issue, I told, regards to the 2032 tax 10 years, tax 10-year farm program that needs two parcels are in and won't be fulfilled until 2027. And I told my attorney, he called their office to discuss, our conversation ended cordially. Then after speaking with my attorney, may inform me the 2032 IRS, the 2032 A IRS estate tax savings of $500,000 that we received with, with the estate. The 10-year farm, the stack saved 500,000 10-year farm program that being in, that being in 2017 is a federal matter between the IRS, my siblings, my attorney, and me. In which three of my siblings reside in Arizona and rarely at all come back to, in Lee or Whiteside Counties, my attorney has made all four of them aware of, aware of this. Thank you.
All right, any other interested parties in the hearing room? Well, if you'd just start with your name, if, I can't remember if Callie was here when you talked the last time or not, so.
My name is Kim Bruno. I live at 1690 Mount Hill Road, and we weren't quite aware of the format of how to present this, so Alice had asked me to read this from Mike and Mia Kurz. They own the drive-in theater, the Midway Drive-In Theater that is about a quarter mile from the sites. I had read some of this at the Palmyra Township meeting, so some of it may be repeat to some. Some of it, we have answered the questions in the last three times, but I'll just read what they had to say, they were unable to be here tonight. And again, this is from Mike and Mia Kurz, owners of the Midway Drive-In Theater.
Could you spell their last name, please?
K E R Z, Mike and Mia. Please accept our apologies for not being able to attend this evening tonight in person. We did not receive official notification with regards to this meeting. This was in regards to the Palmyra Township Planning Commission meeting. We did not receive official notification with regards to this meeting tonight or the solar development proposal from Sundial Energy. We just found out about this meeting this past Thursday from a neighbor and are unable to attend at such short notice. As a result, as a result, our neighbors have graciously agreed to read this statement on our behalf. As owners of the Midway Drive-In Theater, we are concerned with the possibility of a solar farm being built next to local residential homes, farmlands, and near our family drive-in. Following are some of our concerns with this solar farm proposal. Potential disruptions to the Midway Drive-In. Potential concerns include light pollution from the solar farm, which may disrupt our film showings in addition to noise or transmissions on a frequency which may disrupt the movie soundtrack since it is played through FM radio transmission. We are also concerned about the dangerous effects this solar farm may have on the local environment, potentially affecting the safety of the Midway Drive-In patrons, local residential homes, and the surrounding farmlands. We are also concerned for our neighbors, including the homeowners and farmland owners. A solar farm will be a major disruption to their lives, homes, and farm businesses. We stand by our neighbors who are concerned about having solar farms built next to their property. And one observance we have in looking at the proposal is how relatively small and random the placement of this solar farm proposal is, being dropped into the middle of a residential and farmland area. Why not invest in larger solar farm, in a larger solar farm in an isolated area where there is more space for the solar farm to be productive and for expansion? Or are there expansion plans for this solar farm that have not been shared with us yet? Any benefits that the energy provided by this relatively small solar farm are erased by the disruption to the local home residents and farm owners. There's plenty of land in the state of Illinois that can be used for a larger and more productive solar farm, land which does not have neighboring residential homes, farmlands, and businesses attended by children and families. The Midway Drive-In Theater is a historical landmark which is celebrating its 75th anniversary in 2025. The Midway is attended by both local families, in addition to those who travel a distance to enjoy an evening in a safe place with their family. The Midway is also part of a wonderful community of homeowners and farmers. This local community needs to remain a safe place for the homeowners, farmers, and for the Midway Drive-In. Judging by the discussion of our neighbors, the community would be best served without this solar farm in our neighborhood. Best regards, Mike and Mia Kurz.
Thank you. Any other interested parties? All right, how about on Zoom?
Yes, could you give me two minutes?
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you.
Yeah, I'd be interested in speaking, could I just get like one minute to stop real quick?
Well, you know, while he's finding a safe place to rest, gentleman ZB A, apparently we're gonna finish evidence and arguments tonight, so the next step is findings of fact and recommendation. I need time, as you know, to draft possible motions for your consideration. Between that and some other obligations, I'm looking at, at that, I think we can probably do it in one night. I'm looking at April 28th. Can you guys pull out your diaries or whatever you keep track of? That's a Monday, two weeks from today. Would you be available, Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Alice, before I even get to the next one, as far as you know, is the courtroom available then?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow? Monday, the 28th?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Phelan?
I'm not available, sorry.
Mr. Crawford?
What time you starting?
I assume 6:30.
Yes, I can make it.
Ms. Ankle?
Yes.
Ms. Sasser, either you or somebody else in your office?
Yes, I can make myself available.
Well, you're, you're not required to be here, but is there any problem with that date, Mr. Stanford, you or any of yours? Uh, Ms. Court reporter? Okay. Jonathan, as far as you know? Okay. Did you find a place to light yet, Mr. Thuzen?
Yes, I did.
Good, okay. And I assume we're talking with Griffin Thuzen again? And go ahead and tell the board how you feel.
I would just like to start by addressing the fact that this solar field is not green. And if you take the time to look up what it takes to produce these, these panels, they require approximately 2.6 tons of quartz, quartz sand in order to produce the silicone. That quartz sand, that 2.6 tons of quartz sand produces about one ton of 90% silicone. That quartz sand is turned into silicone by a furnace, an electric furnace, that has to reach 1,000 degrees Celsius in order to produce this silicone. If you really take the time to review this, it is not a green thing as much as people want to say that it is, it's not. The cost in fossil fuels to produce, to ship, to maintain these panels will not cover the energy that they produce in their lifetime. I would also like to say, as far as just being a patron of Lee County, this, I understand that your guys' hands are tied with the law that was passed in '23, and that there are some things that make it difficult to fight this. Although I would like to speak up for me and my children that are gonna have to grow up and live the next 20, 30 years and see these solar fields take up our beautiful agricultural land. The land that America has pridefully taken care of for hundreds of years is, is being taken away little by little. And that, that idea that it has no effect on the surrounding housing, the neighbors, the people, we, we are a rural community. I am parked right now outside a giant field that I can barely see the end of. I don't want my children to drive around and see solar fields in every single one of our fields. And I understand that this is something that's gonna be difficult for the county to fight, and I hope that many of you board members don't want this either. Let's, let's find a way to limit these solar fields from being placed anywhere. There are a lot of other places that these solar fields could go. There are a lot of other places that they could put these panels in. It is all about money. They claim that this, this energy credit that we're going to get, that the solar company pays for it, if you read the bill, it's not the solar company that sponsors that credit. It is the federal government. The federal government provides $2 million as a credit for the energy. It is not paid by the solar company. The solar company is funded by the federal government, by our taxes. We should have a right to choose what is done, and I understand that recently legislature, legislature has changed and made it so that the counties are, are not able to do that. But this is something that we cannot let go on, and we cannot just stand back and let it happen. I mean, I feel like I, I was probably the youngest person in that room most of the time, and I feel very passionate about this because it is something that I am going to have to live with, and my children are gonna have to live with. Some of you guys may have 20 years or less left, but I hopefully have a good long time, and I hope my children have, have another 50, 60 years. You guys got to enjoy this, this country being beautiful and landscaped by our agricultural land. This idea that we need solar panels and all this stuff, it's, it's crazy. Please help us fight and let us know what we can do to prevent these from going everywhere. And, and for those of you that are petitioning this and wanting this to happen, the people here don't want it. Palmyra Township does not want it. We do not want your solar panels here, and I know you're selling it and you don't care. It's all about the money. But let us tell you that we do not want it here. If you want to put it behind Kohl's, if you want to put it behind Walmart, if you want to put it next to some other commercial property over by the Walmart DC, there are a million other places that this could go that does not retract from the landscape nearly in the comparison that it does in where you're putting it and where you're putting many other projects in this area. Think about our children, think about your children. This, this is something that goes far beyond these couple of days, this special use permit. This is something that could potentially affect the rest of our lives. There have been many times in which we've gone and done something and realized that it, it's contaminated water sources, that it's destroyed the environment. And there is no way to repair an environment back 100% to what it was, and this is Class A farmland. The corn that is planted there, the soybeans, they are cleaning the air we breathe, and you are taking that away. The solar panels aren't gonna clean the air we breathe. We need to, to, to be reasonable and, and look at not just now, the short term, the money, but the, the future of our country. Because for too long, we've looked at the short term and not looked at the long term. And now we've been left with a country that, that isn't what it used to be. So let's, let's protect the little things. So let's, let's protect the little things, like our agricultural land. Please put your solar panels somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, let's see, we've covered that, okay. Gentlemen, we're at the conclusion of the hearing part. As I said, we'll work on facts, finding of facts and recommendations in a couple of weeks. I ask you in the interim to disregard anything you've heard, no matter from whom, that was a fact that they did not testify under oath and were not subject to cross-examination. I will try and get you the draft motions prior to April 28th. I was going to promise a date, but I better not do that. I will try and do it as, as much as I reasonably can. Okay, everybody have a good couple of weeks, and we'll see you April 28th here in the old Lee County Courthouse, third floor, 6:30 PM. And recess.